Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen. This is a quote. "It is in the best interest of the countywide community to resolve the issues by creating a balance between the needs of agency clients and those of the residents through a set of policies and guidelines regarding the location of human service facilities." End of quote. This is the last sentence out of the problem statement from the final report of the Social Services Citing Task Force. This is also a quotation. "The proposed moratorium is not an attack on social service agencies. Rather, this proposal recognizes the complexities of this issue while taking a positive step forward in the public policy debate over an area of legitimate community concern. It is necessary, it is vital, it is time for such a period of time to allow all of those involved to do it right." That's the end of the quote. That's the last sentence from the presentation of the moratorium to you by me on February 19th at which time it was approved. At the time that moratorium was approved, there were six objectives set forth for the task force that was put together and filed the final report established. The overall objectives of the work program were first, to protect the character of residential neighborhoods; secondly, to provide for the availability of adequate and affordable locations for social service agencies throughout the county; third, to assure client access to services; fourth, to provide for a means of facilitating community notification and involvement, ongoing community relations and resolution of conflicts associated with the citing of social service facilities. This is based on a commitment to meeting housing needs in the community in a timely manner and within a cooperative framework that recognizes the importance of identifying citing needs and issues while addressing community impacts and concerns as well as development issues. Fifth, develop educational strategies which promote understanding of social service agencies and the needs of persons served by social service agencies. Promote sensitivity by social service agency staff to neighborhood needs and concerns. Promote early communication between social service agencies, government jurisdictions, and neighborhood residents prior to citing care facilities. And sixth, assure compliance with applicable state and federal law, including the Fair Housing Act. The task force that was appointed by the city and the county undertook those six -- to meet those six objectives, and I think everybody who has read the report would agree that they did it with an exceptional competency. The report that was submitted entitled "Final Report of the Social Service Citing Task Force" was comprehensive, did submit recommendations addressing, I believe, all and each of those objectives that the city had set forth at the time the moratorium was called for. In submitting that report, the committee recommended 11 citing policies, and underneath those, in a combined basis, they recommended 23 guidelines for the city to consider. In addition, there were nine guidelines which were not recommended due to a lack of time and therefore the lack of ability to gain a consensus, but they were listed separately for future public policy discussion. So in effect, there were a total of 32 guidelines implementing 11 citing policies that were recommended by the task force. Two of the guidelines, two of the 23 guidelines that were recommended by the task force related to dispersal. And to quote those, first, establish minimum spacing requirements of 1,320 feet for residential facilities. That was guideline one under policy eight, and that was a recommendation of the task force, which I believe, as they wrote in their own introductory materials, were never quite voted on by a majority, lack of majority, but were simply a consensual type of agreement by the task force. The second one that related to dispersal, and this is a quote, was to establish regulations addressing the minimum number of feet to be allowed between human service facilities, and then in parentheses they added, "Refer to St. Paul, Minnesota and Portland, Oregon ordinances." That is guideline two under policy eight. Last February, when the city council approved the moratorium, they clearly directed the staff to get this done within six months. The task force met that deadline, much to their credit. Several weeks ago, the staff was advised by the council that it would -- or the staff advised the council that we would have the dispersal ordinances by August 19th, which is at midnight tonight when the moratorium expires, with recommendations on the balance of the policy suggestions shortly thereafter. And as a matter of fact, in the ordinances, we even had included a phrase directing the staff to continue to pursue the other, the balance of the recommendations. The ordinances are ready for adoption as promised, and those are the two ordinances before you this evening. Staff work continues on the other policy recommendations. Some will argue that the city should address all of the task force recommended policies at one time. I don't think that is necessary, especially since dispersal is the key concern to be addressed and is the key concern that prompted the moratorium in the first place. However, a three-month extension of the moratorium would allow time for staff to try to address the balance of the policy recommendations, although that is a difficult timeline given present workloads and priorities. Extending the moratorium for three additional months would be legally defensible according to the city attorney. Courts typically have supported moratoria of nine months or less if work is underway to resolve the issue prompting the moratorium in the first place. The city council has before it basically three options this evening. One is to take no action. Thus, we would revert back to the situation as of February 18th with those conditions being no rules or regulations on citing. The second option the city council has is to extend the moratorium for three additional months through November 18th or November 19th, and that is the last ordinance before you this evening should you choose to take that option. And third is to approve the dispersal ordinances, the two that are specifically before you this evening, imposing the new dispersal regulations, one or both of them. This is a very complex, difficult, and sensitive issue with strong feelings on both sides. The city has no help or guidance, quite frankly, other than the St. Paul appellate case, since the city is taking the lead on this problem nationally. Many others are watching the city of Vancouver for its leadership. The solutions, however, admittedly need to be fair, equitable, and non-discriminatory. The staff continues to believe that the proposed ordinances are fair, equitable, and non-discriminatory. In fact, I believe these ordinances will help ensure that the national objective of mainstreaming will be accomplished in reality. To support a non-regulated citing environment, in my opinion, will continue to produce just what has been produced already, an overconcentration based on economics. This is a disservice to all parties and is the worst form of discrimination because it hides behind the mantle of noble objectives and platitudes. This appellate court decision in the St. Paul case clearly recognized this and supported dispersal efforts very strongly. The staff also recognizes, however, that the city needs many of the other policies and programs recommended by the task force to be truly fair and equitable in the city's policies and non-discriminatory in the most effective sense. The ordinances, however, are not the ending of this process. They represent only the first step in developing a comprehensive approach to the issue. Under any option that the city council chooses of those three that I mentioned, the staff will continue pursuing aggressively the other policy recommendations and will bring and plan to bring to the city council implementation strategies and recommendations as they are fully developed on all 32 guidelines under the 11 citing policies. In order to do this, we plan to call on members of the city council, the task force, the neighborhoods, the homeless council, the housing authority, and the general public to ensure the best possible implementation strategies are developed. I think it's easy to see from all sides that the approval of these ordinances, in my opinion, could create a divisive atmosphere that defeats the purpose and the accomplishments of the past six months that have been achieved by Karen Scott, Carmel Bentley, on behalf of the county, working with the providers and with the neighborhoods. A lot has been accomplished in the past six months. An awareness, I believe, has grown on both sides of the issue as to the particular and unique problems that both, each of the other sides have. The neighborhoods do have legitimate concerns, and I think today, most of the providers would admit that they have a better awareness of those concerns. The providers have serious concerns, and I believe that most of the neighborhood people would acknowledge that they have a better understanding of those today. Both sides are legitimate concerns. Even though I continue to believe strongly that the dispersal ordinances, as recommended by the task force, and that's an important point to keep in mind, the ordinances were recommended by the task force with a consensus of all parties. I think, however, that the most productive thing that can be done this evening is to continue the moratorium so that we have the opportunity to work with the neighborhoods and with the providers to come up with the comprehensive package on all 32 guidelines under the 11 citing policies. We believe deeply that there is no other way, of course, to have a comprehensive, fair, and equitable program than we need all of those policies and guidelines implemented in some form or another. Again, I stress the ordinances, should you choose to approve those. Our good ordinances to accomplish what we recommended to you needed to be accomplished, and that is the reversal of the overconcentration, the stopping of the overconcentration in the neighborhoods. And as I mentioned to you in a previous memorandum, the city has adopted as one of its goals the livability of its neighborhoods, and this is important to that goal. We also, at the same time, adopted a goal on the diversity of the community. And I would argue that the diversity of the community is best protected or ensured or enhanced by the mainstreaming of the facilities. However, we can't achieve that without the other recommendations that the task force has prepared. And in order to do it comprehensively, without divisiveness, to build on the success to this point over the past six months, we are pleased or strongly recommend that you not approve the two ordinances. You continue the public hearing until October 21st, I believe is the date, October 21st, and the staff will be working with the agencies and the neighborhoods that we reference, the other agencies, the county, the Vancouver Housing Authority, to bring to you a report and recommendation that deals with all of the guidelines to the best of our ability by that date. That will allow you sufficient time to debate those issues and make amendments or changes that are necessary, and that's our report and recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
My name is Kenopp, and I live out in the county. I was also on this task force. First and foremost, you have to define the types of social services. You have to categorize these. A daycare center has not the same impact on the neighborhood as a home for battered women. A licensed medical treatment facility does not have the same impact as a group home for physically handicapped. The economics of this whole picture cannot be addressed by two quick-fix ordinances that are unrealistic, impractical, economically unfeasible, and has not taken into the account the multiuses in location. You are going to have to solve this in a comprehensive, complete, and thorough manner. And this "pass it now and trust me, I'll take care of it later" is the most appalling philosophy of city government I have heard. You first have to have a plan for dispersal in each category. You have to hire a liaison or use staff to locate facility sites and develop a citing evaluation worksheet. You have to have each social service agency contact staff or liaison for the purpose of finding adequate facilities using programs where necessary. You have to locate facilities that are compatible for multiuses. When in doubt of any project and what that project will do to the neighborhood, you have to have neighborhood involvement and agency personnel sit down and discuss the problem. You have to find a solution. One cannot just throw up his hands and say, "There is nothing out there for me," nor can you say that, "I'm not having it in my backyard." There are places out there, and yes, some of them will be in your backyard. Thank you.
Yes, at the planning commission meeting after listening to the testimony and consideration of the ordinances, recommended or moved that the matter be returned to the city council without a recommendation for passage, but with the recommendation that we obtain more information on the problem, deal with a more comprehensive ordinance, present a report based on the entire Social Service Citing Task Force report, contact the Vancouver School District regarding issues that are related to the schools, and consider further whether the question of income of users should be considered in the definition of social agency. But their recommendation was neither for nor against the ordinance.
My name is Alice Glesner. I live at 1,005 West 22nd Street, and I've lived in Vancouver for forty-some years. And I am in favor of the spacing program. There's not just home care facilities we're talking about, we're talking about all social services. And it's discrimination to cluster them, in my opinion. And I think that the spacing is a very great idea to get these people out in other areas where they're not all grouped. And C-Trans has a beautiful program and handles these, the physically handicapped beautifully. I've seen it happen on the buses because I use them. They're great. There's nowhere that they can't reach. So I hope that people do take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Alice. Okay, thank you, Janine. Could you please go forward?
Hello. I'm Janine Degania, 109 East 44th Street. I'm not with anybody, just me. I just wanted to remark that, or ask, as a matter of fact, are you aware, how many blocks, how many city blocks a quarter of a mile is?
Well, not all blocks are the same size, but you're about 280 feet apiece, aren't you?
Yeah, I figured it'd be about four and a half to five blocks is, and that would be the distance between the social services and/or whatever, which to me does not, depending on what type of a service it is, is not far enough.
Folks, please, everyone's entitled to their opinion.
Well, I have a place that's only a quarter mile from me, and I can hardly get out of my neighborhood. So that's why a quarter mile seems like a short distance to me. I also was curious, in this that I read here, there were some studies done to try to determine if these social services and homes do lower the value of properties. And according to this that I just read in The Columbian, the YWCA said they could find no other affordable site within the city, and that is on the west side. So I moved here in 1950, or came to Vancouver in 1950, and the west side then was very desirable. That was where everybody wanted to live, and the property was higher than most other places. Now, all of a sudden, it's lower. So if it isn't, what is it that's causing this? This is just something, I mean, I know what I think, and you guys can think what you want to think. The only other thing that I wanted to know is the churches that are located in residential districts, are they under a conditional use permit, right?
I don't know. Jerry?
They have to go through a citing approval process. They're allowed in all zones, but it is subject to a hearing by the planning commission.
Conditional use?
Yes.
Which would perhaps mean, how many hours are they open and what kind of services?
No, no, it's, all that refers to is that there is an opportunity for hearing before they're placed, but
Typically, typically, a conditional use means that before the activity takes place, it'll have to go through a public hearing.
Oh, so then they could be open from six in the morning until six the next morning?
Oh, yeah.
That's right. Yeah, we don't have any way to regulate, of course, the operation of the churches.
Yeah, churches, hopefully, are open 24 hours a day.
Okay, well, that was all, that was my comment.
Janine, thank you.
Except I do want to say that I really do thank Mr. Fishback for the help that he has given to the neighborhoods. And whatever you decide within reason, I'm with you.
Thanks, Janine.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Tom Milne. I'm the executive director, Southwest Washington Health District. I reside in Portland. As a Slip 12 connotes, it's on the water. I don't really live on Portland, I live next to it on the water. So I hope you'll forgive me. I spend a lot of time here, especially at budget times.
You can easily come over and be a resident then, right?
The house has been for sale for two years for that attempt, as a matter of fact. In any event, I will be extremely brief, since most of the points that I would have made had I spoken first have already been made. I think the key statements were made in Mr. Fishback's introduction when he said a couple of key things, I think. One is the statement, "Strong feelings on both sides." I think some of the comments tonight have reminded me a bit about the, of the first meetings of the task force, when we all had concerns and fears and problems, but I think as the task force proceeded through the subsequent weeks and months, we learned the concerns of each other, we learned to respect those. The conclusion I came to, just speaking for myself, was in fact, there are a number of problems that need to be addressed. The cited, the proposed ordinances are one approach to resolving that. I think that there are other approaches, but the most important thing, I think, is that the togetherness that that group gained over the course of the six months was such that we were resolving problems, and we were really working together as a unit in many ways. We didn't always agree on everything, but we worked together and we tried to understand each other and resolve potential solutions through identifying problems and finding solutions to the problems rather than taking positions. My strong encouragement to the council tonight, then, is that you defer action on the two ordinances, give the task force three months more to work on possible solutions, to flesh out the staff report and recommendations. I personally think we can do it. I say "we" advisedly, I'm not sure I'll be included in that process, but I'm certainly welcome to, or would volunteer my services to participate in that fashion. I'm not sure what'll emerge, but I do think what will emerge will be better than the pieces that are in place before you tonight. I think the pieces don't represent bad feeling on anybody's part, but rather the necessity through short time to try to produce a document that the council has requested. The other suggestion I would make to council, if you have the time, and I'm speaking out of turn now for two residents of the community, is that you prevail on Beth Hovey and C.C. Ryan Smith to provide a tour of the neighborhood, that those of us in the task force have the opportunity to take. I think it helps clarify the problems that are there, and it may help you understand those problems as well as potential solutions. With that, I'll stop for any questions that you might have.
Yeah, Tom, I just have a quick question to maybe nail down a more definitive public statement from you. I think that, as I said earlier, I don't think the council would necessarily be advocates of delay for delay only. I think that I could be moved for a delay process that would bring something substantive back, that we would be closer together than possibly we are now. Do you feel that happening if we were to extend the moratorium?
I think so. I think that it'll take a great deal of work, and I think that we can't enter it blindly thinking that in three months we can solve all the problems of the neighborhoods and the social service agencies. But I think that if we direct our efforts to three or four specific areas within the recommendations of the task force, that we can provide you with some specific guidelines, some more specific recommendations for ordinances or staff action that'll address the problems.
Thank you, Tom.
I'm Franklin Hensley, the director of Catholic Community Services for Cowlet, Skamania, Waukaicum, and Clark County. What I would like to do is really support a process here of looking at the Social Service Task Force citing report and gleaning from it those things which are really going to move forward, the work we need to do in making sure that social services are appropriately cited in the community. The task force report does include some specific recommendations on ordinances, but those are not going to be effective unless we build in a process where everything else that happens around those ordinances, decision-making on what are appropriate social services for various areas of our cities, decisions on what things should just be exempted so that you, city council members, don't have to be involved every time a daycare center would like to move from one block to another. What I am saying is that I support setting aside the two restrictive ordinances and getting back into the process, which I think was a real learning process for everybody involved, and that's how to work together to cite social services and to determine the appropriateness of dispersal versus clustering. The moratorium, I feel, has had a chilling effect on the development of social service programs. You saw one social service agency coming forward asking for an exception, but you saw, or what you didn't see were many others of us who have thought, "How are we going to make this grant request when we don't know when we finally get it, where we can put things?" I want to talk specifically about the fact that within the next few months, the city of Vancouver and Clark County are really going to have to find a new place for the winter shelter program, and is the moratorium going to lock us into places that are off-limits? Or can we really get into a process where we find an appropriate place for a winter shelter? So just to reiterate, I think we're into a good process of melding some specific ordinances regarding social service citing with a real process to get the community involved in how to put these places appropriately.
Would you be willing to be a participant, Franklin, if called upon?
Very definitely. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Arnie Dyer. I've lived on the west side for 20 years, my family and I, by choice. We chose to live there because of the diversity of the neighborhood. We felt and still feel it's the only place, really, in Clark County where all types of people are welcome and live freely. And I was thinking, just before I came down tonight, my daughter just graduated from Hudson's Bay this summer, and I got to thinking about the kids who come over to visit, and there are all kinds of kids. And I don't think that there are other neighborhoods in our community where there's that kind of diversity. I am concerned about keeping that diversity, and I think that the ordinances before you will help that continue. Something about my background, I think it's, I just feel it's necessary to let you know that I do have a long history of working with social services. I'm proud to say I started the Meals on Wheels program in Clark County some 12 or 14 years ago. Worked for 10 years for the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. I volunteered or served on the boards of such things as Showcraft Shelter Workshop, Friend2Friend organization, Visiting in Nursing Homes, Hillhaven Nursing Home Advisory, the Seaman Center, shared housing, I could go on. I very much support and have a firm commitment to the people that social service agencies serve. I think that the ordinances before you will help those people. Now, that's separate from the agencies. The agencies are separate from the people they serve, and I think sometimes, especially in public hearings like this, there's a natural tendency to let that distinction blur. I've worked with many of the people who will speak tonight and worked with almost all of the agencies. I know them to be good people. Sometimes they make good decisions, sometimes they make bad decisions. And I think trying to cluster services in west side neighborhoods has been and will be a bad decision. When I worked with RSVP, we worked with some 75 to 80 public and private nonprofit agencies. And I can tell you in all candor that when my office was here in city council, or in city hall, I wouldn't and needed a car to get the vast majority of my work done. I really question the legitimacy of the map we had up here with, for social service agencies. It does not reflect my experience. I can tell you that the vast majority of the agencies we served, and we served almost all Clark County agencies, were in a fairly hefty walk of city hall. I'm also concerned that there's a kind of redlining attitude with social service agencies, not necessarily conscious, but kind of unconscious, that the idea that certain neighborhoods, the redlining in real estate is you don't, you don't give mortgages in certain areas. Well, there's kind of a reverse thing. There's kind of this monolithic illusion that all the poor and elderly live in the west side of downtown. It's a convenient preconception, but I don't think it's true. My wife is a social worker in the schools, elementary schools. She's worked very hard over the past three or four years in really trying conditions in two elementary schools where the kids are poor and sometimes neglected and live in terrible conditions to work with them. And I would guess that, as I'm telling you, you're probably thinking of Howe and Fruit Valley. But my wife works in the Evergreen School District. But my wife works in the Evergreen School Districts, and the schools are Orchards and Silver Star. And one of the biggest problems my wife faces in her work is the fact that there are no services available for the people she works with. Within a convenient radius of Orchards and Silver Star, there is no counseling available except private pay, which excludes the people she works with. It seems to me clear that there is a kind of discrimination going on here. Maybe it's benign, but it seems to me there's a clear pattern. Services are available to people in downtown Vancouver neighborhoods, and key services are simply not available in other areas of the community. What this suggests to me is that the poor and other people live throughout Clark County. They're able to find places to live. Social servants agencies are unable to find places to locate inexpensively. Another thing I was told, I neglected to mention one other organization I served with. Until this afternoon, I was on the Board of Trustees of the Columbia Urban Mental Health Association, from which I resigned this afternoon so I could speak freely this evening. One of the things I've been hearing at our board meetings is that all of our clients are within one or two zip codes, just almost all people. And for the longest time, that made great sense to me, until I started thinking about the information that I've been hearing from my wife and other people, that we have people who need services all over the county. So the suggestion that you may hear from agencies that, "Well, most of our clients live downtown," I think is a misleading argument. That it may certainly be true, but I don't think that should suggest to you that therefore they're serving all the clients they need to serve. The Adult Day Center is, needs to be relocated. There's a subcommittee, an advisory board chaired by former Mayor Jim Justin. Even in that report, the advisory committee suggested to the Board of Directors that the site needed to be more centrally located. It serves elderly who can't get around well and all. In spite of that, the top prospect for relocation is likely to be a West Side location. One final thing that finally led to my resignation, we're an understaffed board. We don't have as many board members as we need. Recently, the board changed its bylaws so that instead of leaving after two, three-year terms, board members could continue, because if we didn't do that, we wouldn't have a full board. And so there was a lot of talk about submitting names to add to the board. I submitted the name of a West Side professional person who served on a number of public and private boards and commissions, including mental health. No action was taken. I asked about it after one of the meetings, and I was told by one of the board members that we didn't act on that person because we were concerned that it might get in the way of our locating on the West Side. I think that some action, such as these ordinances, is essential, because I think there are some people in the social service community who will not listen otherwise. Thank you.
My name is C.C. Ryan Smith. I have a couple of statements. One is a letter from the neighborhood representatives to the task force. Did you all receive a copy? To Mayor Bruce E. Hagenson and members of the city council, from the neighborhood representatives to the social service citing task force, August 19th, 1991, subject proposed ordinances addressing the citing of social service agencies, residential care facilities and homes. As neighborhood representatives to the social service citing task force, we support passage of the two ordinances for the citing of social services. We agree with the statement in these proposed ordinances that this is a first step towards adopting additional recommendations of the task force. In its report, the full social service citing task force recommended that minimum spacing requirements be adopted for both residential facilities and human service facilities. We believe that the ordinances' minimum spacing requirements of 1,320 feet are essential to accommodate both social service needs and neighborhood revitalization objectives. We ask the council to pass these ordinances tonight and use them as a basis to refine, build and expand on other recommendations of the social service citing task force. Other task force recommendations can be incorporated into the ordinances in the form of amendments. Additional ordinances can also be created as more recommendations are ready to implement. However, should there be any agreement to extend the moratorium, we would urge the council to affirm its commitment to, one, pass ordinances or make amendments that retain the minimum spacing requirement of 1,320 feet called for in the proposed ordinances; two, use the proposed ordinance as a basis to refine, build and expand on other recommendations of the social service citing task force. In the last three months, neighborhoods and social service agencies have made tremendous progress working together. Your action tonight in support of these recommendations will begin to implement what we have achieved so far. Your support will also set the stage for continued cooperation involving all of us who have vital interests in providing social services and ensuring neighborhood livability throughout Vancouver and Clark County. Signed, Bob Lawson, House Neighborhood, Jeanette Palfrey, Hazel Dell Neighborhoods, Beth Hovey, House Neighborhood, C.C. Ryan Smith, Northwest Neighborhood, Rita Mahoney, Roselier Neighborhood, and Tracy Gilbert, Cascade Park Association. One of the things I learned out of the task force that I didn't expect to learn is how underserved our county is. I interviewed administrators from the Evergreen School District, and they said, "What we need is help. We have no one here to help us, and we have tremendous problems." Ultimately, we must consider that the homeowner and the taxpayer contributes payment to all three issues of social services, revitalizing the downtown, and serving the needs of all the people of Clark County. During the task force meeting, there was not one neighborhood representative who said they would not work jointly with social services in order to cite.
Thank you, C.C. Any questions, council? I would concur with you on that last point. I think that was one of the hopes that the council had in establishing a moratorium was to set a timeframe so that people would get down earnestly and work together. And I think to a greater extent, that has been accomplished. Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Mayor Hagenson and members of the city council, my name's Beth Hovey. I was also a member of the social service citing task force. The two ordinances that are in front of us tonight refer specifically to spacing requirement. And I think that 13, 20 feet sounds ominous to a lot of people. And so, being a graphics-type person, I started waking up at 5:00 in the morning thinking about it, and I thought, "Well, let's see, what does it look like?" So with the help of Phil Arnold and John Asserby and a few other people in our neighborhood, we were able to put together something to show what is 1,320 feet? What does it look like to us? So I have a big map here. Can everybody see it?
Yeah, we can't see anything else, but we...
(laughing).
Beth, yeah, we want to record your comments, so please use the wand.
Well, I was, I couldn't see the other map that was up. So I know that if you're curious, I would encourage you to look at it. This map is a map of the Clark County urban service area. So this is considered the urban area of Clark County. So outlined in blue here is the City of Vancouver. This area right here is the area of debate, and it has been. If you look at that in relation to the urban service area, it seems pretty small.
You mean as far as a percentage of square blocks, square miles, or anything else?
Yeah. Now, these dots are scaled to the map, and this is what a quarter of a mile is. So that's what it looks like, if you want to hold it up to the City of Vancouver. But just to show you, out into the unincorporated areas of the rest of the county, this is what you could achieve with a spacing.
And it's not even the rest of the county, it's just the urban...
No, this is the urban area, that's right. I mean, we don't have Yakult up there. We don't even have Battleground in the, you know, Battleground's 179. So this is considered the urban service area.
If we'd always had this ordinance in place, say, that was always 1,350 feet, about how many of those would be on the West Side now?
Good question. Okay, this, these dots represent one square mile with one-quarter mile spacing. There are 25 dots here. So if you look up here, this refers to the social service area of high density, and we estimated that as being one and a half miles, and that would be here. And this, we have designated as, this is 39th, south of 39th Street and over to the freeway.
Yeah.
And this is the real area of concentration.
What is your, what is your Western limit there, Beth?
Kaufman.
Thank you. Okay.
I mean, it probably should go on over to Lincoln.
So there'd be about 24, somewhere in there, 20 to 24.
Probably more like 30, I think, because 25 and one square mile, so.
Yeah.
I guess, one of the points I'd like to make with the map is there's room for the social services to go in many other places in the county. And this small area over here, it seems like it's almost hard to debate at this point as to whether or not we should have the moratorium, also in terms of the urban service area. We have, the city limits is approximately 16 square miles, and the urban area is approximately 100 square miles. So there's lots of room, even with a quarter of a mile spacing.
Could you hold up that...
And the entire county is 633 square miles. So we're talking about a sixth, one-sixth of the area of the total county.
Could you hold up those dots once more, B.J., the one that showed them, showed the actual...
The big dots?
Yeah. Just across the urban belt, basically, which is the left-hand margin of the city out towards the eastern side. I just want to visually look at that again. That was, if you had a textbook case and somebody said, "Okay, we're going to put our social services sightings according to a grid that was established by an ordinance that happened to have 1,320 feet as its dispersal mechanism," so what you're saying is that that's what it would look like, and there's how many agencies there, or how many sightings?
Well, on this piece of plastic here are...
Yes, 430 sightings?
Thirty-some.
Okay. And still, we haven't touched Hazel Dell, Pleasant Valley, Brush Prairie, Battleground, Camas, or anybody else?
That's what it looks like.
Thank you.
And I was curious to do that. Another thing I'd like to give you...
Now, these are the address of items within that impact zone, that 1.5 square miles?
Yeah, within the high density with the red, in the red area.
Okay.
So I just say that there's room out in the, not even the whole county, but in the urban service area for accommodating social services. And I think that Arnie Dyer said it very succinctly, there is a need out there. And why are we depriving other citizens of the county of the essential services? If you look at this map from the air, you can't really tell what is the city and what's not. This is highly, this is a highly developed area. The neighborhoods are as dense as any downtown, or City of Vancouver neighborhood. There are business districts throughout this area. Cascade Park has businesses, and business districts everywhere. If you've noticed in all the names, there are, it's dense, this is the densely populated area of Clark County. So I wasn't going beyond the limits, including places like Yakult that were really still strictly rural. So they have strong neighborhoods, and they're densely populated, and there are businesses that serve them in their area. And I believe, as Arnie Dyer and other people have stressed tonight, that these services need to be there to meet their needs. And I think spacing at the quarter of a mile will begin to address the serious issue of how we can integrate the services into the county as well as the residential needs of the people. Thank you.
I think sometimes doing things graphically help focus what we're actually talking about, and I appreciate the effort that you went to.
Well, I mean, a lot hinges on these ordinances, and I know that spacing is the first step. But you have to start someplace, and I am convinced now even more so since I've looked at this, that there's plenty of room to grow.
I'm very interested in planning. And frankly, I don't see how this ordinance, designed to get social service people out of a couple of neighborhoods on the West Side, is going to provide services in Sifton and out over Evergreen or Silver Star and so on. I don't get the connection in putting the dots all over, all over the urban services boundary. Does this ordinance affect anything except Vancouver?
I guess, I don't think you'll find, and I appreciate what you're saying, Bob, but several other people tried to intimate that the council and/or the staff and/or the neighborhoods are necessarily trying to discriminate against certain types of people and certain types of service users.
They're poor people.
And that is not the intent of council. I think, I think that what our intent always has been is, as you've called for, and that is to look at the entire community and how we as a community address those particular issues. Concentrating them all in one spot does not mean that we are doing anything necessarily positive, Bob.
My name is Ron Morrison. I am the administrator of the Department of Social and Health Services. The other thing that's been said a couple of times that I want to make again, because I think it is really important, and that is, that is to put the word "impact" in big letters, because somehow we have to study these things in terms of their impact, their impact people-to-people, their impact area-to-area, that impact in making good social policy, rather than looking at economics or rather than looking at specific areas, we have to look at impact. And I would argue that officers like mine, that have as many as 1,000 people a day come through my door, have a significantly different impact than a small one-or-two-person agency that may have 10 or 15 people a day come in there. And we have to plan for them, and we have to set social policy for them in different kinds of ways. And these ordinances simply don't look at it that way, and I don't think they're going to do what you would want them to do for that reason. With those comments, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council, my name is Eric Hovey. I want to comment quickly on two items that I don't think have received a lot of attention tonight. One is the importance of, I think, these ordinances on schools. And then second, I just want to comment briefly on the whole question of whether you proceed with the moratorium as opposed to adopting the two ordinances. One of the things that hit me most strongly, and as you well know, I've been involved in this for what seems like ages, this issue in one form or another, but that hit me most strongly in reading the report of the Social Service Task Force was some of their comments on schools, and there are three that stand out to me. And there was a subcommittee that did a questionnaire of schools. They specifically interviewed the Houck School principal and the councilor at the school. And there are three things that stand out from that. One is the statement that the school's attendance area, that's Houck School, includes all of the emergency shelters in Clark County and a number of the social service facilities. There is a significant impact on the school from the family shelters, including daily demands for counseling children in crisis. Second item, the estimate of at-risk children attending the school is as high as 90% based on the number of students receiving meals at reduced or no cost. And third, for those who attend Houck, the amount of teacher attention is reduced by the needs of each at-risk student who must be cared for. I want to tell you, I'm like Arnie Dyer, who, I have a tremendous amount of respect for some of the things he said tonight, and I know they... for some of the things he said tonight, and I know they took a lot of courage on his part. But I'm like Arnie Dyer in that I made a decision together with my wife a few years ago to move to and to stay in the Hauk neighborhood. And the reason for that is because I value being in a community with diverse people and diverse lifestyles. I think for myself and for my children, that's essential. But when you get to a point where ninety percent of the students in a school are at risk, I have to start asking myself some questions. And I have a daughter that's entering first grade, I have another daughter that's going to be entering kindergarten in a year, and I'm going to be looking closely at whether I think my children can get an education in an atmosphere like that. I value the diversity of that system. I want them to be with people of different lifestyles, different economic strata, and I think that's extremely important to them, but I'm not willing to sacrifice that for quality education. And I think for people like me, who look at making the decision like that, whether it's me, or whether it's somebody that's thinking of staying in the neighborhood, or moving into the neighborhood, that the decision you make on this ordinance, or these ordinances, is extremely important for those people. I also think it's important for students who are coming from those at-risk families, because it's not healthy for them to be in an environment where nine out of ten kids are also from at-risk families. Where are they going to get the modeling that they need from other students that's going to help them out in life? Where are they going to be able to get the attention when there are nine out of ten other kids that are also demanding a significant amount of attention? And I know from past testimony before the council, there have been teachers from Hauk School that have testified to the problems. I think it's extremely important to adopt dispersion in order to address that. Which gets me to, I guess, to the second comment, and that's just the question of whether, of whether to proceed with extending the moratorium or to adopt the two ordinances. I think there are really valid arguments that can be made on both sides. I'd like to, for a moment, just make the case for proceeding with the ordinances as they're written. I would agree that they're probably not perfect ordinances, I'm not sure that any ordinances are. I do think, however, that they are tremendously good start. For the first time, we really have seen a definition of what a social service agency is on paper, and one that I think is possible for the council to respond to in a policy sense. I suspect that if we were to try to perfect an ordinance, I'm not sure that this is the sort of area in which it's possible to come up with a perfect ordinance. Um, I think this is a moving target. Social service needs are on the increase, and they're going to continue to be on the increase, and I think we're going to need to find that, we need to re, to refine the response to deal with needs that nobody anticipated as we go along. So I think there's some value to proceeding with the ordinances as they're written, as that first, important first step. It's extremely important, I think, that the council send a policy message of whether or not dispersal is going to be, in a sense, is going to be that key building block for the rest of the, uh, social service policy. And on that building block, if there's a decision made, then I think a lot of the other pieces can start to fall into place fairly quickly. I would also note that I think the spacing requirement is consistent with what at least I read the Social Service Sighting Task Force, kind of all sides and, and all interest having, having recommended. So I do want to point out that while there are, certainly is a case to be made for either extending the moratorium or proceeding with the ordinance, I think there's some value to considering moving ahead with the ordinance, getting this part of the debate behind us so that we can move on to some of the other important questions ahead. Thanks for your time, and I, I really do appreciate your patience in working through tonight and on other nights, what's, I know has been a difficult issue.
Eric, Ms. Besman has a question.
Yeah. How will the dis, the dispersal of the social service agencies will probably not have an impact on the high percentage of at-risk students who are attending that particular school?
I don't, I think you're right. It won't have an, it won't have an effect overnight, but I think over time, it will have an effect, and it can have an effect in several ways. One is if there are emergency shelters that are located in other school areas, that, that actually could have a fairly immediate effect. And those emergency shelters, I can tell you, in terms of the constant in-and-out flow of kids, take, take a tremendous toll on, on the schools. The, but I think, second, long-term, you begin to see a gradual change in the schools as people perceive that the city is really committed to making the neighborhoods a good place for families to, to live and, and to be in. And I think, third, there are a number of people that I know of who've made the decision who live in the Hauk area, that because they cannot, um, they don't have a lot of confidence in sending their kids to, to school in that area, they either are sending their kids to private schools, or they're getting boundary exceptions. And I think over time, you'll begin to see some of those coming back. From my standpoint, again, it's not important that the, that the school, again, be a perfectly balanced at this point. I want to, but I am going to be looking to see that, whether we're making some strides in the right direction over a period of time or not.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Helen Dygart. Uh, I had prepared remarks, which I have set aside. I would like to make two comments. I must correct a statement that has been made, that all the children in the shelters attend Hauk. That is not true. The children who were in the winter shelter went to Harney, and in some cases, John Rogers, and, uh, I do not consider the winter shelter to be on the west side of the city. Then, nobody, we've kind of alluded to the fact of the financial commitments that are going to be made. And one of the things that we have not discussed this evening, it was not a part, a really a part of the discussion of the Siting Task Force, of which I was a member, was the cost of all these services. Now, there's nothing that goes without cost. There is going to be cost to the community, and there's going to be cost to the social service agencies. And while there's been some sense that the social service agencies can do what they want, when they want, you are all very experienced in this field, and you know that you do not establish a social service agency without having to pay for it, either through private donations or through some government support mechanisms. So I would urge the council to give, to extend the moratorium. I don't think I am quite ready for, to support the two ordinances, but I think that in establishing new protocols, that attention should be given to the cost of the services. And as we out, as we went through the various recommendations that we made, it was very easy to point out where there were some very essential costs that must be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, return this to council for action.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Couple of observations. I believe this council is committed to the preservation of neighborhoods. That's what brought us here. I also have been somewhat frustrated tonight by some of the innuendos that we are insensitive to the needs of the poor, because I think you can look at city councils all across this country and not find the people with the commitment in their own professional lives, like Mike Wilson and I have had, and the number of council members who serve on boards of social agencies that you have in this group. And, and I want to respond to some of those statements, because I believe this council does have a, a social conscience. On the other hand, we've got to conclude, and I think the social service people have alluded to the fact, that there is an inordinate amount of social services in the downtown area and on the west side, at least the agencies that provide the major impact are there. And I guess what got us here was our commitment to neighborhoods and our commitment to social services, but some of the problems we have had in the past with the location where the city was the last group of folks to be cut into the loop. And as I told a couple of you folks that I talked to over the phone this week, it's a little disconcerting for us to sit here on one Monday night to talk about a three-million-dollar development of a, of a downtown commercial area, only to find out that a major social agency is going in there and have the major property owner in that area suggest to us that he's going to stop all of his development that was predicated on that, because he doesn't know what the impact of that agency is going to do. And somehow, we need to put out the word more articulately, I guess, that we need to be cut into that loop, and we want to work with the agencies in the, in the sighting. Social services, from my experience, and I think Mike Wilson and Pat Gelato will agree with me, with the testimony also, that they are finance-driven. They locate in the more inexpensive neighborhoods, because that's what they can afford. They locate there because unfortunately, in years past, we have allowed those homes to be converted into offices, and we have seen some of our housing stock go by our own ordinances that allow the transition of, of that housing stock to happen.
I wholeheartedly support the neighborhoods in the sighting of social service agencies. We've heard of the cost to the agencies, we've heard of the cost to the taxpayer, there's also a cost to the soul of a neighborhood. If they perceive that their neighborhood is being used as a dumping ground, then that perception is the truth for them. One thing that, that was not brought up is very often these agencies cite for the convenience of the social worker. One said to me, "We have to be in that neighborhood so that we can meet a more convenient place." That's fine. Mr. Dyer brought up a good, a good point that I had not even connected to this. I was out today trying to give some wood away to a foster home. Called a woman, she lives in Yakalt. She had to drive her kids into West Vancouver for counselling. There was nothing closer to her in Yakalt. We are going to have to disperse these social service agencies out to Orchards, to Yakalt, Amboy, La Centre. The need is out there. They're driving into West Vancouver. Did the agencies bring the need? Did the need bring the agencies? It alarmed me when I heard there are many agencies putting in requests for grants. They won't be able to get them because they don't know if they're going to be able to locate on the west side. That does not make sense to me. Locating west of the freeway does not mean you're not going to get your grant. You can look in Orchards, you can look in Brush Prairie, you can look in a lot of other places and go ahead with your grant. So while I wholeheartedly support dispersal for the neighborhoods because of the cost to the heart of that neighborhood...
In the absence of being able to reach agreement, I want to go on the record as saying that I will vote to support the ordinances, because I believe the neighborhoods need protection.
But I'm also prepared to come ninety days from now and support both the ordinances, even though I have some concerns, but they're very minor about them. And I think the staff and the time available, because of the time crunch, is not deserving of some of the criticism that we're...
Now, when I look at it from the viewpoint of the livable neighborhoods, it seems to me, from what I've heard here, that dispersal does indeed serve the need of dispers, of preventing the grouping of the social services, which is the reason for the moving them out of group of situations, institutions. I'm going to support the dispersal, and appreciate and look to and listen to the very fine committee that started to work on something that perhaps should have been done years ago. I appreciate the work they are doing. I will support the moratorium, and I am leaning towards, at the end of the moratorium, to support some kind of ordinance that keeps the social service agencies from being all-in-one neighborhood. That is the position that I take on this.
And I guess one of the questions I would have the staff would be, in the next ninety days, is it possible that there may be other precedent or other legal opinion established around the country that may help us yet again, in ninety days or sixty days, help us? Certainly Vancouver isn't the only community going through this. And then another question that I have, there's been a great deal of reference tonight from the audience and the various participants about the county. And the county helped pay for half of this task force report, and I think that we have an obligation that if we do continue the moratorium, to perhaps look at an interlocal agreement with the county, because they obviously serve a much bigger service area than us. As Beth Hovey's map pointed out, there are a lot of areas that dispersal could obviously take place in and to. And I, I think one of the things I'd be interested possibly in pursuing in the task force is looking at bringing someone on, an individual that could at least take us through the ninety-day process, if not beyond that. We need an, an individual that can disseminate a lot of the, the information related to the schools, and related to a lot of the things that were addressed tonight. Those are just some of the things that, that I've had a, a question with. Mr. Fishback talked about us having, having enough time to do it, and given all the priorities that the staff has. So I hope we'll really look at possibly developing something in conjunction with the county to give us a staff person that can take us through that process.
I attended the Metro Green Space Forum the other day, and they gave an interesting analysis of a fishnet that was cast out on the water. And if one little rope in the fishnet broke, that was okay. Another little rope broke, no problem, they could still catch their fish. But at one point, one of the ropes in that fishnet broke, and then that net no longer could hold fish anymore. And I guess I look at our neighborhoods as a fragile fishnet which is breaking apart, and we have made a strong commitment to our neighborhoods. And I guess, after listening to everything, I'm about ready to vote in favor of the ordinances now.
I hope you also are walking away with the fact that, at least with the impression that we are committed to our neighborhoods, we are committed to the fact that we believe dispersal in some format is going to be good public policy. I resent the fact that people have accused the council of being discriminatory in their approach, particularly as I have, as I have people from way outside our own personal boundaries, our own city boundaries, talking to us about the fact that we are discriminating, when we don't have too many people who actually live in the impacted neighborhoods talking about the fact that we're being discriminatory. And while I think we want to measure impact, we want to avoid prejudice, we want to avoid making bad public policy based on perceptions that aren't correct, I think it has to be apparent to everyone that the neighborhoods are saying, "We got a problem." And how you measure that impact or not, they've been living with it, and they think they have one, and I think probably they do. And while we might want to do it more scientifically, from the perspective of some of the social service agencies, I don't have a whole lot of folks living in Hauk saying, "We need to measure it in some scientific manner." We have an awful lot of folks living outside our boundaries, outside the river, saying we need to measure and approach it more scientifically. And I agree with you, but I think that you have to look at what the council's role is, and that is to take care of our downtown neighborhoods and our citizens. And I wish, I wish you well in your efforts. I hope you come back with a closer consensus than we have now. Any other comments, council?
The challenge, actually, is to the agencies at this point.
Yes, the challenge, and hopefully the challenge is also to the neighborhoods to keep in, keep in there, keep an open mind. We appreciate all of your efforts. We know, as I said last time, I appreciate the fact that people of goodwill have worked together and will continue to work together with open minds. Anything else this evening? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.